Okay, the committee is back to court of order. Mr. Celestial, we're gonna go ahead and continue on for your testimony. You're recognized, sir. Just state your name for the record.
I'm the chairman, Ada, and senators. In honor of C. Robert Namolik Celestial, Manita Zenitusha, as you testified earlier, my priority is to know me. Lo, they testify, they say honestly, they defend the Tomorrowland Trust. They get spirit through, they defend the Tomorrowland Trust. There's a proposal for the golf course, there's a proposal for Mr. Carlos. Now, there's a new proposal for C. Jalisi, Mr. Herrera. You know, this has been said, but my notes are all over the place. First, I want to say that we're all here because we care about our people. There's not one person here that doesn't care about our people, and we want the right solutions, especially when it comes to Tomorrowland Trust and those that are waiting on the list. Everybody has different calculations. Maybe their calculations are all right. Talk about nine millions, even more than nine millions. But prior to this, they wanted to borrow nine million earlier from the Tomorrowland Trust. So they do have nine million. They already allocated those nine millions for some of the infrastructure in Diego and other places. The question I wanted to ask the earlier gentleman that was sitting next to Carlos is, he says that they're paying the rent. Is the golf course playable? That's what I want to ask him. Is it playable? What's the condition of the building there in GICC? Those are the two questions I wanted to... Because if it's not playable, how is he paying the rent? And if it's not being refurbished, where... how is he paying the rent? And so, another issue, he said, there's a lot of missing communications here. And he mentioned that there's no one qualified here on Guam. I want to share something. I'm retired from the U.S. Army, a disabled vet. When I first came back from San Diego, I was the operation manager for Admiral Nimitz Golf Course. It's no longer a golf course. I was also the operation supervisor for Leo Palace. I worked with Mr. Young. He was the superintendent, and I was the operation manager. But then, the VA gave me 100% disability, so I couldn't work. So I had to quit all my jobs. I even had to give up my teaching license as a golf professional. I had to give that up. I had to turn in because you have to report your GRTs for all the money you make every year. So a lot of people say that there's no qualified individual here in Guam to run a golf course. That's not true. There's a lot. You know, I graduated from the San Diego Golf Academy, became a golf pro in California, came back because I wanted to do something for the people of Guam. When GICC was at its premier as a golf course, the kids there would benefit tremendously every day after school. You could see them running around, carrying buckets of balls, laughing, joking, talking to their parents and the teachers. There's a lot of good golf instructors. One of them passed away, Mr. Joe Cruz. So as a golf professional, that golf course was run down to the ground. I don't know why, but it was one of the premier golf courses. And if it's run correctly, then the proceeds could go to the Tomorrowland Trust. When I was in San Diego, let's say I was in, you know, they had municipal golf courses, they had municipal driving ranges. They're beneficial for that county, for that state. They'd pay for all the employees, but all the profits went to the county. So that's what a municipal golf course is for. It's to benefit the county or state that it's in. And when we say a municipal golf course here in Guam, all the profits and proceeds should go to either the government of Guam or to the Tomorrowland Trust, if it's run properly. If you get a golf professional, an individual who understands management in golf, and then you get another superintendent that understands agronomy, then the Tomorrowland Trust won't have an issue of GICC. Because it was never an issue before, prior to COVID. Because they're saying that the reason it went down is because the lack of tourism. No, we have thousands of golfers here on Guam. They'd love to go play there. Because why? Because they had two different golf fees. You know, just like in Hawaii, you had the combined rates, right? The local rates. We had local rates over here in Guam too. And so the people of Guam, the Tomorrowls, were benefiting from it. So we're all here to try and find solutions to how do we help the people of Guam, the ones that are listed on the Tomorrowland Trust. That's why we're here, all of us. We have the same spirit, Manita, todo. But I want to share my opinion as a golf professional, as a person. And not only that, I want to change gears. I'm a farmer. I have ducks, I have chickens, I have goats, I have 400 trees. I'm a bondified farmer. And you're talking about, you know, earlier, the mayor talking about all those properties that have cars and tires and everything. I see them. They're my neighbors. You know, and my ducks and my chickens are free-range chickens. I know my neighbors catch them and eat them and everything, but I don't mind because I got a lot. Right? But back to the golf course, okay? Municipal golf course. Let's run a municipal golf course for what's the benefit for the people of Guam. That municipal golf course is not really a municipal golf course for the people of Guam unless it's run according to what Mr. Van Shelley said. You know, and it's going to benefit the Tomorrowland Trust. And that's why we're here. We want to find a proposal. Mr. Carlos's proposal, Mr. Herrera's proposal, Mr. Van Shelley's proposal, and then I have a proposal. My proposal is to reclaim the Tomorrowland Trust, the golf course, reclaim it back. Get all the, if they have a rear, take it back. Move in the Tomorrowland Trust office over there. Take the $896,000 they pay for rent. Use that money. You know, I don't know how they're gonna use it. You could use it either to refurbish the whole building or use the $896,000 for infrastructure. And then move, you know, even the, what you call it, the the other land agencies in there. Man, he showed me nice pictures up there. Three stories. How many agencies you can fit in there? And you don't have to pay rent. It's free rent. The government will save a lot of money. See? So we have a win-win situation. We're gonna have money to build for infrastructure. You could put people out there and give them new leases. Then you, not only that, you help the the golfers if you want to give it back to the golfers. Because you can't build houses on that land because of the water wells. Is that correct? Senator Sanoggi? You don't know?
I'm not quite sure about the building on top of the golf course property.
Well, I was talking to the folks at Tomorrowland Trust that actually worked there, and they said they can't because of the water wells there. You can't build homes on top. So they're the experts, not me, I'm just using their words. So then, what do we do? Which proposal do we use more? Do we use Mr. Herrera's proposal? Sounds good. 500-some million a year? Wow. You know, why haven't we done that years ago? There won't be a list the way we have right now. You know, how many people waiting on the list? You guys are smart people up there. You can calculate. I'm not that smart. All I know is that either you do something both ways, you're, you know, it's a double-edged sword. You're gonna cut both ways. Right? So who are you gonna cut more? You're gonna benefit both the golf course, the people who's gonna run the solar farm? I'd say just my proposal, just take it back. Put it out for bid. See who has the best bid. Which should have done in the first place. Because, you know, they didn't fulfill their obligations under contract. You know, most people, if I didn't fulfill my contract, they'll take my house away or whatever I, you know, made a deal with. I think that's my proposal. And then the highest bidder, if it sounds good, you guys could decide. You know, I like his proposal, $500 million. My goodness. You know, and I like Mr. Van Shelley's proposals too. They're gonna run the golf course, make it pristine, help the kids. And not only that, they'll be able to pay the Tomorrowland Trust. And then everybody's a win-win, except Mr. Carlos. You know? So, you know, like, is it good for me, don't they? We're gaslighting. They doggo hall them, talu launias and lamlam of a month. You know, we're not gaslighting. Gaslighting is when you're trying to manipulate the system. That's gaslighting. We're not manipulating the system. We're trying to give options. You have four options. Which option are you gonna take? I like mine. So, don't clean us, it's messy. Adios.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Celestial, for your testimony this evening. I'm gonna open up the panel to my colleagues to ask questions, and I ask that they keep their questions within five minutes. We do have another piece of legislation that is immediately after this one, so we'll go ahead and, anyone that has any questions. Senator Chulahi, you have any questions?
Thank you. My first question is, where is Mr. Tang, the golf course proponent? I mean, actually, the solar farm proponent, because I have a lot of questions regarding this proposal. It was an unsolicited proposal to this Tomorrowland Trust. Normally, if that's done at any other government agency, they're supposed to take that and bid it out, just like has been proposed. But they didn't do that. So I want to know from the developer, is he here, Mr. Chair? Or will he be coming back, or will we be continuing this hearing until he arrives?
No, I think he had, he left earlier, so...
Well, maybe he's very confident that he's got a deal with the government already. Because I'm not sure why he would not want to answer our questions after we're having a public hearing on this proposal. I think that's the minimum that the people of Guam deserve, the Tomorrowland Trust beneficiaries, who we owe a fiduciary duty to, that they should have answers as well. I wanted to know whether he agrees with Mr. Herrera's proposal, whether this is a good deal for the Tomorrowland Trust, whether this is a good deal for him as well. Is he making the profit that, on a solar farm that Mr. Herrera suggests? And if so, can they spare some of it for the land trust recipients who he cares so much about? I wanted to know from him, what about the allegations that there is no sewer? Is there sewer? Are they putting in sewer when they put up their solar farm? I want to know from him why they haven't answered since October. Who are their investors? Who are the subcontractors that they propose to subcontract with? They've already submitted a bid to, a proposal to GPA. They were preliminarily selected. They are on the list to be given an award, correct? And they gave this in three parcels. They did this all prior to discussing this with the CLTC, getting any legislative approval. And so they, that's why we're in a rush now. They want to get their award. But they broke it up, and I wanted to ask them why it's broken up. Mr. Kumacho, do you know why? It's broken up instead of the one, that all the lots combined, or the whole golf course combined. They put 26.4, and then 26.4, and then 4.4.
Thank you for that question. I am not an engineer for the reasons why they're doing it in phases. I'm assuming Mr. Herrera has claimed, because we did disclose that the total development cost is about 300 million. And I think in order to phase out the 300 million, we have to do it probably in phases. And again, to you ask you the answer, that one question you asked, who are the investors and partners? We don't know that until we sell, at that time, prior to the new beautiful bill being passed, when we had the Inflation Reduction, Inflation Reduction Act. That was based on the tax credit from institutional investors that you sell in the market at that time from the solar energy investors. We don't know who that would be at that time, just like OR tax credit. Only when it becomes viable, then we bring it out to the syndicators. And the syndicator should say, okay, we got X company that will buy the tax credits from you.
Who submitted the proposal to GPA and who are the...
Our partners did.
Yeah, so who are they?
That is Power Solution.
Yeah, are there any local owners of that, or any local interest in that company, or that's only...
Two local owners, Mr. Razano.
Mr. Razano?
Yes.
And who, the other one? You said two local owners.
And Mr. Ilao.
Ilao?
That's it.
And the Power Solution, what about SK Eco-Plant? That's a big national...
That's from Korea. That's Korea.
Korean company. Is there any local interest in that?
No.
So the proposal was submitted with two locals and otherwise global companies?
Again, if you, to understand the renewable energy industry and the tax credit investors, you must have someone with experience in the solar and renewable energy industry. That's the reason we did that with them as a partner. Now, that doesn't mean they're gonna be our partner, because that deal died last year. So this time around, we'll be open to opening up to who we can work with that meets this underwriting criteria.
Who was that that dropped out?
No, nobody dropped out.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we're starting from scratch, because 17937 did not make it.
Are there any subcontracts that you anticipate for local companies?
Not at this time. That's out of my, no.
All right, because that's not the information I've been given, but I want, I have nothing in front of me to prove it either. So I'm gonna have to take your word for it. The, I wanted to ask Mr. Tang, when he made his presentation to the municipal planning council of Dedido, did he tell them that, because he keeps talking about how solar is gonna reduce our power rates? But GPA, did he tell the municipal planning council members that, and the people of Dedido, that this, this deal is not what's going to reduce their rates? This deal is just part of GPA's overall solicitation for solar. They're gonna reduce our rates based on solar.
Senator, I'm glad you asked that question.
Regardless of whether this deal goes through or not, is that right?
Senator, I'm glad you asked that question.
Well, if you let me finish asking it, yeah.
Let me know what I think.
Yeah, well, I want to know what he said to them and whether he made that promise that this is the deal that's going to lower their bills at GPA? Or did he tell them the truth, that GPA is going to lower all of our bills based on solar power? Because they're going out for so much solar power, and they will find it whether this deal goes through or not.
Can I answer now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you asked that question. For clarity, when we made that statement, I hope you can recall, it was this body that passed the renewable energy policy.
We mandated it, yes?
Yes, you did. And GPA to do up to 50% of their resources to get out of fossil fuel. Now, there's two types of solar. You got the one that some people said rooftop, and you got ones called the utility solar. This is a utility solar that benefits everybody. Because not every rooftop, not, since they said...
If you could answer my question, Mr. Kumacho.
Wait, I'm explaining the difference first. Not, and that's how we got into that. Not every rooftop, as they claim that majority of that's all low-income families, would afford to spend $30,000, $40,000 in solar in the top of the roof. This is considered the utility solar that benefits all the rate pairs. And that's when we made the claim, 45,000 rate pairs, rate pairs with benefit once they reduce their fossil fuel impact.
Once GPA reduces it, right?
Yes, not at all.
Which they plan to do no matter what this happens with this contract, right?
Well, if they met the statutory law that you guys passed, I'm not sure what bill that, do you recall that bill number?
No, no need. It's not relevant for this hearing. This hearing, I only want to know what was told to the people of Dedido.
You asked a question.
Yes, I was asking what they were told. What were they told?
That's what we were told.
They were told that...
Based on the policy that you guys passed.
Okay, because it sounded like they were told that this deal, if we don't get this deal, their power rates are not gonna go down based on solar.
No, we didn't say that. We did not say that. Let me correct for the correction. We stated, and that's what the intent mentions, the policy that you, this body passed for renewable energy and from the savings of the fossil fuel?
Yes. If GPA does its job, it will save us on power rates, correct?
Fact, that's it.
Right. Not whether this deal goes through or not, because they're gonna get the solar power, right?
This bill, if you look at it, has a default clause. If we don't get it, then...
Their power rates will still go down.
I wish, I hope so.
That's correct.
Your time is up. We can go ahead and...
Come on now.
I hope I answered that, thank you.
Yeah.
Multi-million dollar deal, and we can't ask questions. Just, I just have a few more, and I sat through hours of testimony, and I would like to get the answers. These are the only people who can answer. If the, if the company's not going to show up, are you part of the company, Mr. Kumacho?
I'm not part of the company, no.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. Senator Taidigui, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank everyone who was, came to testify today. And you brought a lot of passion in your heart, you know, in both for or against. And we all respect your decisions on why you support it and why you don't. But I think it was, Mr. Vina Venti made it clear that, you know, we're here for the people of Guam. You know, whether there are golfers, you know, or whether they're the people who are waiting for property for Tomorrowland Trust. I think we can find a win-win situation. The only thing I wanted to bring up was, of course, was in the paper, was asking if I could have EPA. I know she's sitting here, Mr. Chair. I just have a question to ask her if she can answer it or not. Or if she can't, then maybe could provide that to the, is it okay to bring her up?
Sure, Ms. Celest, Ms. Celest, you can come up real quick.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the committee.
Senator Taidigui, you're recognized against Senator Taidigui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, are you familiar with this type of solar paneling?
Yes, we have permitted two solar farms on Guam, so I'm familiar.
Okay. What is the repercussions if, in the event, any of these panels, the particular panel that was mentioned, would leak?
So certainly, like Ms. Monaca Flores explained earlier, there are consequences and, you know, hazards associated with solar panels in their manufacturing and also with their disposal. So depending on the type of solar panels that are installed, there certainly can be environmental impacts if those solar panels were to leak. You know, she had mentioned all the hazardous materials that go into making the solar panels. And she was correct. She was also correct in that the industry hasn't caught up with proper disposal standards for those solar panels. So certainly, there is an environmental impact negatively if those solar panels were to leak. Prime example is just the residential solar panels that were disposed of after Typhoon Mawar. So these are not the same panels, but we had three 40-foot containers that were taken by USCPA that were categorized as hazardous waste. And those were just residential panels, so there is an environmental impact.
It was mentioned earlier about the panels not having PFAS in there. There are certain panels that are very environmentally friendly. Are there really, you know, environmentally friendly panels? I mean, we have Manila right now filled with these particular panels, and we have the same up in the south as well, so...
That comment was also true, that the industry is also looking at alternatives that do not contain PFAS. I don't know, you know, which manufacturers those are, but certainly there are manufacturers that are looking at those alternatives for PFAS-free solar panels.
Does Guam EPA have any guidelines and rules and regulations that govern over these for environmental purposes and protection that you follow through, you know, inspections or things like that?
Certainly, we have environmental regulations for the construction of a solar farm. Like I said, the industry does not have specific regulations with the disposal of of solar panels at this time.
So other states and territories that have this type of solar panel, what are they doing to get rid of the panels once they end their life, their shelf life?
I can't confirm. I know earlier there was a comment that mentioned that there was only one company that took solar panels. So I couldn't tell you. I could tell you that, I can only tell you that for Guam, those solar panels went out as hazardous waste, and they were shipped off islands. So at this point, I couldn't tell you.
So you would basically tell a company that if they do have these... So you would basically tell a company that, that if they do have these panels and it ends its shelf life, that they would be responsible to discard it, but not in our, our landfill?
Absolutely, our landfill will not take that type of hazardous waste, that's correct.
So it would be their responsibility to do so, to disperse of that? And EPA would follow through to ensure that it was done correctly, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. So on the environmental side, I'm very concerned about there, and we all know that, that area, I mean, the map that was showing, there's so many houses around that area, if there was a typhoon, I mean, like, a lot of solar panels that were destroyed during the typhoon. I think, maybe Carlos, you can answer this. What is the protection on typhoons? I mean, how can we ensure that these don't start flying in everybody's backyard or houses or hurt anybody in the event there's a typhoon? Is it like typhoon-proof, or what is the plan?
All I know on the, excuse me, thank you, all I know on the engineering design, they have to develop the, the base so it doesn't have an uplift. As I described earlier today, it's not raised up 30, 40 foot high, these are two, three feet off the ground. And the only example I could use, and if you guys hope, don't bring this example, every election year when you got those eight-by-16 billboards out there, they just lay it in the ground and it doesn't fly up, right? You have to lay down so it doesn't uplift. Well, this one's bolted, secured with concrete. And the only thing I can tell, as the only closest example, is the one in Mangila, owned by Keppco, right there, right near the cliff line, and that's a huge, over 1,000 panels, and they didn't, they didn't lose any panels. But that's all, I mean, that's the only reference I can do.
Is it insurable?
Yes, it is, we have to insure it, yes.
Okay, so they are insurable?
Yes.
Okay. I was hoping too that GPA would be here as well, just to find out, Mr. Chair, was there a deal already made between this company, or, you know, that if they would, if they do put up these panels, that, because that would kind of be, you know, a little off.
No, 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 no deal has been done, no.
Okay, so no deal has been, okay, thank you, Carlos.
We still got to go to the competitive, as it's disclosed in the bill, if we don't win the bid, it goes, it defaults back to a golf course.
Okay.
We still got to win it.
You still have to go after the bid?
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I want to make sure.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, I'm, I'm, I just think that the fairness of this should be that, you know, it should go out to bid. I mean, if, if they don't want to no longer be a golf course any longer and want to do this, a different industry, then, and if they're confident enough, and that the price that they're willing to, you know, rent this for, it's done that way, I think, I think everybody would be fine with that. You kill the contract because they can't, no longer can afford it, and I have to say that, you know, we should have a little bit more compassion about GICC. They were in a situation like many people in COVID, losing so much revenue, and unfortunately, they did not, was not able to avail themselves of funding to keep them alive, like most other businesses on island that got federal money, they got local money from LEAP programs, and, but GICC did not. I mean, it was almost destined to fail that way, and we need to show a little bit more compassion about these companies that failed during something so devastating, and then, of course, Typhoon Marwar. So it's unfortunate that they didn't, they didn't get any help. But if we could just, you know, I'm looking at La Guatia and Mr. Herrera and Mr. Beneventi, I mean, don't you think that if they were just to end the contract, go into this type of work, and then put out the bid for whom, who has the most they can make from this? Because you and I both know, another golf course on this island is not going to really prevail. You look at all the other golf courses that are, you know, failing, the fire sales that's been going on, they're not going to make it. I don't think they're going to be able to outbid a company that's going to come in to generate revenue that, like, they can, number one, or number two, or provide, you know, the percentage of renewable energy that's needed on this island. And it's as simple as that. Just go out for a bid. Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taidiwi. Senator Borinat, you're recognized, sir.
Si dos mase, Mr. Chair, and just as a member of the committee respectfully, I want to again lodge my formal disagreement with this five-minute rule. I think, like, with this measure, with any measure, anytime the people of Guam's voices and the people of Guam's house are not able to ask questions or get answers, I don't think it leads to sound policy. And frankly, I don't, I don't get it.
Thank you, Senator, and so noted. I just wanted to let you know that I don't, I don't, as long as you have your questions in order, you'll be able to get as many questions in and find.
Again, I just think five minutes, it's a little ridiculous.
Thank you, Senator.
With due respect, Mr. Chair. Si dos mase to the panel for coming out, si dos mase, Mr. Herrera, si no La Guatia, Rumbo, for your very passionate testimony. I absolutely agree. The reason why there's so much passion here today is because we have failed to live up to the dream of what the Chamor Land Trust Commission should be. And so our people are left in this position where we are, we have a commission that out of one side of their mouth says that, oh, we have to do this golf course deal and convert it to a solar panel because we need to pay the infrastructure to put subdivision here, subdivision there. But on the other side of their mouth, they give away the crown jewel, they say, they vote to give away the crown jewel of the Chamor Land Trust at Oka Point. Sense or no sense? It doesn't make sense. And then here we are, rushing this proposal through, cannot ask questions, limited on the time. So Mr. Comacho, apparently you're the point man for this, you're representing the client, and so I, I just wanted to ask, because it sounded like you had a lot of involvement. Basically, you wrote the bill. Are you a registered lobbyist with the legislature? Are you? Okay. Yeah, on the record.
Yes, I am. I'm a registered lobbyist.
Okay, good.
Just for the record.
That's it, thank you, thank you.
I knew you were going to ask that question.
I appreciate the answer. I think you're one of the only ones, because we ask a lot of people who come in here and they say, oh, no, I'm not a registered lobbyist, so, thank you for that. I noticed though, when Mr. Herrera was, is that a counter offer, Mr. Herrera? It's a very good counter offer, but it looked like you were getting a stomach ache when he was talking about that, that counter offer. So I'm not sure how much of a done deal this, this bill is, but I agree completely with Mr. Herrera, and I think, I'm hoping they'll agree with me. Part of the issue also with the Chamor Land Trust is, is our own elected leaders continue to undervalue the very lands that are in the inventory of the Chamor Land Trust. And that's unfortunate, and I think Mr. Herrera's on the right track, that if we are to entertain this proposal, which my first thought was, oh, if they're going to give $9 million, they must be making a lot more than that. Right? Yeah, that just kind of makes sense to me. You know, if you're going to give $9 million, how much are you really making? And, you know, how much value do we as elected leaders think the Chamor Land Trust deserves? And so I noticed that Mr. Tang, who unfortunately isn't here, said the existing lease is not void, but the public auditor in audit referred to the, referred to the lease to the AG because he deemed it illegal. And I think, you know, he's definitely one of our bright legal minds in our, in our community. And then in the bill, section three, page 10, the bill seeks to ratify the lease that Mr. Tang says is valid. So there are just a, a lot of questions, a lot more questions than, you know, we can fit into five minutes. And so, you know, I, I understand the support that was given in the testimony, but I think that's because we're in this difficult situation where, you know, we, we, in, in previous legislature, we've entertained a lot of bills for the Chamor Land Trust on the good side of it, not necessarily the land giveaway that we're seeing here where we have plenty bills, give land for this, give land for that. But in the last six years of this administration, and you can check this for the record, I think they've only issued, one or two residential leases. And so we can support it in here, we can pass bills, we can give $9 million, but then you get some senators in here who want to take the $9 million from the poor Chamor Land Trust. And give GMH so it could disappear. So yeah, it is, it is frustrating. I didn't support the original measure of the bill, and you know, clearly, I think that the measure as written, I agree, Mr. Herrera, and I hope you guys will agree to that, there needs to be more value for the beneficiaries of the Chamor Land Trust if we're going to enter into this, this proposal, which, you know, I don't like how it got here to us because it definitely, I don't know, someone here said, if it, if it smells, believe it, but it, it smells worse than it smelled last year. So I'm hoping we could get a, a good bill, or, or, you know, the author will be open to amending it so that we see the true value and the benefit for the beneficiaries of the Chamor Land Trust, because these issues we're seeing now with affordable housing, people who came way before us thought of this as a solution, and if we don't support this as the solution, then we end up with the situation we have today where our own people are out here homeless, our own people don't have a house, our own people don't have infrastructure. So si dos mase, Mr. Chair, for the extra time.
Thank you, Senator, you're welcome. Actually, I didn't really hear too many questions in that five minutes, so obviously, five minutes is a long time. Thank you, Senator. Senator San Agustin, you're recognized, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, last year I introduced similar bill, and at the end of that bill, when it didn't pass, the golfers asked, they wanted to get back the golf course. I said, go for it, go for it, and I hope for the best. Months have gone by, has anything happened? No. Did Chamor Land Trust respond by saying anything to the, to, did you see, I see renters or lease, that they're going to revoke it and move forward? Today's hearing, I've heard recommendations to find ways to make sure Chamor Land Trust gets enough funding so they can move forward and do the infrastructure, so we can not only take care of the people in Dedido, but also the people in the south. Man, la, 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 it's all done, all over the island, it's not just one area. We got to cover as many bases as possible. And all this bill was asking for was a way. Now, if Chamor Land Trust Commission wants to give it to the golfers, then so be it. Finogando, Rumbo, so can I say, so mo? But, no más excusa, don't blame the legislature or senators like me, because I'm introducing something to help the recipient. And I don't know how many people are in, in the body that are, that signed up in 1995, but I'm one of them, and I still haven't got the land, but not an issue. I wanted to make sure everybody else gets the land. Build their home, and let's move forward, not make excuses. If the bill passes, so be it. If it fails, I'll look for another way to find ways to get money to Chamor Land Trust. And I won't support lending money out of Chamor Land Trust to, for GMH, like they did in the past. They took money out of Chamor Land Trust and it never came back, that I'm aware of. So that's going to stop. I'm in agreement with you folks. We find a way for the, to take care of the golfers, we find a way to take care of the Chamor Land Trust, and when we talk about solar panels, I don't know how many senators do, they have solar panels in their house? Because I do. And it didn't move during any storm. So, por favor, be careful how you say, and it's going to fly to the neighbor. Say if it flies, it flies. And who are you going to blame? Ghostbusters. With that, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just hope the bill can get through, we go to the markup, take a look at all the testimony, and we move forward with the bill. That's all I ask for, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator San Agustin. So with that, bill number 135-38COR has been publicly heard, and we will go into the next bill, and that is bill number 164-38COR, introduce a Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Joe S. San Agustin, William A. Parkinson, and it's an act to add a new Article II, Chapter 61 of Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to streamlining the zoning law for affordable housing. And currently, the, the author of the legislation is, I'll be reading the sponsor's statement. Buenas tardes, and thank you for convening a public hearing on bill number 164-38COR. I regret that I cannot be present today. I am currently attending to an urgent medical issue within my immediate family. Bill number 164-38COR proposes the streamlining of Guam's zoning process for affordable housing developments. It will allow projects to move forward, not in years, but in months, so that we don't lose critical financing or watch costs inflate until they can't be afforded. But make no mistake, in this bill, we are cutting through duplication and delay without cutting corners on public notice or environmental safeguards. The bill includes guardrails to prevent this mechanism being used to fast-track any housing project, chief among them, a mandatory land use restriction agreement, which ensures that homes built under this law remain truly affordable for no less than 10 years. This means the term affordable housing is more than a slogan added to the project's application. It is a legal and enforceable commitment to our working families who struggle with the high cost of renting or owning a home. We hope bill 164 strikes the right balance between cutting red tape and maintaining accountability. After this proposal becomes law, mayors will still, mayors are still empowered to facilitate critical public hearings and outreach, and protections for our aquifer and critical resources will stay in place. We are in the midst of a housing crisis. Across the island, homes are overcrowded, rents continue to rise, and people are living without water or power. If we don't act, today's housing shortage will become tomorrow's slum problems. Bill 168-38 is one part of the solution. It's not the whole answer, but it's necessary, it's a necessary step, and we have developers ready, families waiting, and land available. I humbly ask for your support of my, the support of my colleagues and our community in moving this measure forward. Si dos mase, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, the author of this legislation. For this legislation, I guess we have everyone here that's ready to testify. So we'll go ahead and, we'll start with, we'll go from my right, your left, so, Ms.
Thank you. I was surprised to see this bill attached, and I was actually excited to see this bill attached. I retired, I reclaimed my time by retiring in 2019 from architecture, and I spend, I'm still very active, I work full-time for what interests me, and I, what interests me are things that impact my friends and their families in Dedido. So I just want you to know where I, where I come from. I am open to the thoughtful, right use of, of the finite land resources on this island. We can't go to the next county and put our solar farms in the next county. Guam is the size of many lakes inside of a county in the US, so it's very finite, and I'm very aware of that. Land use and zoning go hand in hand. When I started my journey about finding where I stand on the GICC property, I looked for a land use plan. I found one in 2016, couldn't find any public hearings, couldn't find any legislative action that codifies the 2016 plan. What I did find is that 3,000 acres have been rezoned from, from residential to industrial, and what is sitting on that land, the power plant, 260 megahertz, I get that wrong, 260 blah, 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 from Cortec, and the Guam PDM printing press and, you know, their whole empire there, there's additional land. That's 3,000 acres that was intended to be residential. In the 2016 plan, it's right there, and it is no longer available for residential use in the most densely populated village of Dedido. Then, putting on my land use and planning background, I looked for what is the right amount of green space? Is there a plan on Guam for green space? Is there a plan on how many square feet, or how many acres of land do we need for solar panels? I couldn't find that. I couldn't find a metric for green space. I can't find a metric for housing. I can't find a. I can't find a metric for schools. I can't find commercial zoning everywhere. But, so Guam doesn't have a plan. So as someone who looked at GICC and said, I'm open to it being a solar farm. I'm open to it being, actually, housing. Why not housing? I'm open to it being a golf course. I'm open to it being green space in a park. I'm open to all of that, but what is Guam's plan? What is the use? What is the thoughtful, public forum use for that land? And I could not find it anywhere. I spent a lot of time, like I said, I've reclaimed my time. I spent a lot of time looking through documents. I listened to all your hearings. But I don't see a plan. And from my background, land use and zoning go hand in hand. We seem to, on the Cross Island Road in Santa Rita, we have a huge solar farm going in there on agricultural land with the Paris family. You know, there's zoning going on all over the place. But I don't see a plan. I don't see set-asides. I don't see a thoughtful use of land on Guam, and it's getting gobbled up daily. I live off of Route Three, and I watch things being cleared on a weekly basis. And I don't see any houses being built. And I don't see housing land use in the zoning plan that is sacred or thoughtful or cared for. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burkhard, for your testimony. Ms. Lastimosa, Administrator Lastimosa, your testimony, please.
Hi, good afternoon, Vice Speaker, Honorable Senator Still here. My name is Michelle Lastimosa. I'm the Administrator for Guam EPA, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony. The Guam EPA is supportive of any measure that provides an increase in the supply of affordable housing. However, we offer recommendations for amendments to the bill. Guam EPA has no objection to allowing zone changes on proposed properties which are sewed or which are outside of the aquifer as legally designated by the groundwater protection zone. Therefore, it protects aquifer quality and prevents the possible loss of portions of the northern Guam land's aquifer as usable and safe sources of drinking water. Guam EPA recommends that zone changes as proposed not be allowed on unsowed properties within the GPZ. The installation of a sewer system that complies with federal and local public improvement standards, including extending sewer lines across frontages and providing laterals to each lot is essential to every housing development. The developer is generally responsible for the cost of the sewer line and potentially for larger or more complex systems. If sewer lines need to cross adjacent properties, the developer must obtain the necessary easements for the sewer lines. The developer is responsible for installing all necessary off-site sewer lines and equipment to connect, connect the development to the Guam Water Works Authority system. Additionally, if a sewer lift station is required, the developer is responsible for its costs and related infrastructure, especially if it serves a larger area than just their development. On page seven, line 15 to 20, the bill states that in subsection F, "Developments located over the northern Guam land's aquifer or within designated water resource protection areas shall be required to connect to an existing municipal sewer system, if accessible. Where municipal sewer infrastructure is not available, the developer shall install advanced nitrogen-reducing onsite wastewater disposal systems approved by Guam EPA." Guam EPA believes that this should only be extended to R1, single-family dwellings that meet the current minimum lot size requirements. Apartment buildings and housing subdivisions should not be allowed to use the nitrogen-reducing onsite water disposal system within the groundwater protection zone. Section one, I'm sorry, section 612A04, Zoning Conversion Compliance Enforcement F should not conflict with the Guam Water Quality Standards in 22GAR Section 5101C1B that requires that high-density residential development, more than one dwelling per half acre, should not occur without public sewer services. Dank you, Sidus Maasi, for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you, Administrator Lastimosa, for your testimony. Ms. Duñez, you're recognized for your testimony, ma'am. Thank you for being here all day for this, like with the rest of you.
Thank you. My name is Liz Duñez, and I'm here representing the Guam Association of Realtors. Our president is out sick, so I'm on the legislative committee, so I'm it. Thank you, Senators, for allowing us the opportunity to support this bill. And, um, the, support this bill, which is sponsored by Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Jose Sinagasin, and William A. Parkinson. This measure, the Affordable Housing Streamline Zone Act of 2025, represent a timely and much-needed response to Guam's escalating housing crisis. Guam's housing shortage has been compounded by rapid population growth due to the military expansion and limited land availability. At the same time, rising construction costs, labor shortages, and prolonged permitting and zoning processes have made the development of affordable housing increasingly difficult. Bill 164-38 addresses these challenges head-on with a thoughtful, comprehensive strategy that balances speed, sustainability, and public accountability. By streamlining zoning conversion and modernizing the permitting framework, this bill removes many of the bureaucratic delays that often stall affordable housing projects. The inclusion of land use restriction agreement ensures that the housing development remain affordable and benefit low-to-moderate-income families, those most affected by the affordability gap. Moreover, the bill preserves environmental safeguards, particularly for developments over the northern Guam land's aquifer, and still mandate meaningful community engagement through a revised but effective municipal planning council process. Crucially, the legislation also recognizes the importance of data-driven approach to land use planning, requiring the Bureau of Statistics and Plan to issue clear guidance and clear inventory assessments of R1 and R2 zones. Will help in identify viable lands for the development and strong, long-term planning objectives. In conclusion, this bill strikes the right balance between urgency and oversight, growth and environmental stewardship, and the efficiency and transparency. We respectfully urge the body to pass the bill and demonstrate our collective commitment to making affordable housing accessible for the people of Guam. So this is Guam Association's testimony. I also have my own testimony. This bill directly addresses Guam's urgent housing shortage, particularly for low-to-middle-income families. By streamlining the rezoning process, it provides a more efficient pathway for developers to begin their projects, which is essential to meeting our growing housing needs. Currently, the rezoning process can take up to a year, creating unnecessary delays and discouraging much-needed development. This bill introduces a clear timelines for review and decisions, bringing greater predictability and accountability to the process. Importantly, the bill also ensures that environmental protections, especially those concerning development over the northern aquifer, remain intact. This balanced approach demonstrates that we can move forward with responsible growth while safeguarding our critical natural resources. I urge the legislature to pass this bill without delay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duñez. Mr. Camacho.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Speaker Ada, Senator Sinagasin, Senator Telles, for hanging in here. It's a long day. I've been here also since this afternoon. Well, good afternoon. Hafaday, Vice Speaker Ada, and Senator Sinagasin, Senator Taidegui. My name is Carlos Camacho. I am submitting this testimony on behalf of Micronesia Community Development Corporation. We are a nonprofit affordable housing developer in strong support of Bill Number 164-38, the Affordable Housing Streamline Zoning Act of 2025. We thank the sponsor of this important legislation of advancing a bill that brings both clarity and urgency to Guam's affordable housing strategy. In the past, previous legislature, not this legislature, not the last one, but previous legislature, have often resorted to spot zones, if you guys recall those days, through specific legislation, which, while sometimes necessary, has sometimes contributed to fragmented development patterns and delays in project implementation. This bill does not propose the rezoning of specific lots. Instead, it creates a consistent zoning policy, framework based on housing types, R1 for single-family dwelling or R2 for multifamily dwelling. This was a line, and this was being focused because there's a line on HUD's Area Need and Income Threshold under the Federal Housing Administration Affordability Guidelines. By doing so, the bill creates a consistent, transparent pathway for developers to deliver affordable housing that is specifically targeted to households ranging from the 50% to 150% area need and income. I can provide that FHA guidelines, because that's not here, but I can provide that as an exhibit if anybody wants that. Equally important is the issue of timing. In affordable housing development, time is money. Every delay, whether zoning approvals, public hearings, or agency sign-offs directly increase project carrying costs. These added costs ultimately reduce the number of units we can build and raise, or and raise the rents we must charge to remain viable. This bill helps reduce the cost of money by streamlining zoning decisions, ensuring that development can move forward more quickly and with greater financial efficiency. Moreover, many affordable housing projects rely on time-sensitive grant rewards. For example, tax credits, as you know, that's done annually with a very tight streamline, such as the low-income housing tax credit. As you know, that's some of the projects I've done. CDBG funds, which is coming out very soon. You guys know this, the 500 million that's been announced coming out since January. Or local QC requirements. A lot of you guys passed QC laws for affordable housing. All of these are tied to qualified projects. When zoning delays jeopardize these timelines, Guam risks to losing out on millions in potential investments. Now, let me just rephrase that paragraph. One of the things, from my example, when you apply for any of these projects, you must be zoned correctly. We go to DLM like Mr. Borja's agency and ask for a zoning certification. If your property is not zoned correctly, you would not be allowed to apply for those grants. That's why this is very important. And again, I'm just going to cut this very short. I don't have to read the whole thing. I just submitted it anyways. But real quick, LURA, land use restriction. This streamlined zoning is only for affordable housing targeted to the 50% to 150% area median income. And the bill says 10-year LURA provision. I verified with HUD because of the big, beautiful bill that just passed. They adjusted it to 15 years. So please, if I can ask the chairman to put that on a footnote. It's in my write-up that we have to change the LURA provision from a 10-year deed certification restriction to 15 years so we can be, we can be compliant with FHA. Finally, when I read the bill, they still have, they still streamline the most important players. The mayor still plays a role in the one public hearing compared to three. DLM still plays a role by us submitting an application to DLM when we're doing for the streamline. BSP still plays a role by providing a comment within 30 days. We shortened it so we can, and then the Land Use Commission plays a role just for the zoning part of it, just for the zoning part of it. Once we get the zoning part of the process, R1, R2, you still got the backend safeguard. You still got to submit to the Agency Review Committee. You still got to submit to the Land Use Commission for the full tentative development plans. We're not worried about the part two of it. The most important is the zoning category when we apply for these federal programs. So again, there's this safeguard in phase one with those four agencies I just described, of course, on a shorter timeline. But there's still the backend where they still have the public hearing process to the Land Use Commission and still the Agency Review Committee, like EPA is here, and Land Management is here, and everybody's here, that will still sit in the Agency Review Committee to make comments. Because that's where they're going to check if the water, sewer, power impact would accommodate these properties. If it doesn't, they'll sign off and they won't do it, then Land Use Commission won't approve it. If they sign off that it has, meets all the i's and the t's, Land Use Commission goes in, have their own public hearing, and that will be additional comments from the community when they had their public hearing. So there's a two-part. We're just trying to fast-track the streamline on the zoning side so we can comply and meet some of the very tight schedule, especially, again, this is not lot-specific. So it's not for me. Anybody that wants to use this when they apply for CDBGDR in January, when they finally announced the 500 million coming out, let them become creative because now there's a process. They don't have to wait for nine to 10 months for zoning process. And you know that there's a timing for the CDBGDR. It's called fixed in six. You've got to finish it in six years, right? They already lost a year by putting all the comment period. But this is just an opportunity for anybody that wants to get into the line of work, affordable housing. So this one is neutral base. It is development-specific, and it's not lot-specific. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho, for your testimony this evening. Mr. Borja, would you?
Vice Chair, could I defer to Beauty Before Age and ask the Director of Vivian Marte? She was here before me today.
And the gentleman that you are, I expected that from you, sir, to let Ms. Leon Guero go first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leon Guero, thank you.
Yes, the name is Lola Leon Guero, Director of the Bureau of Statistics and Plans. Hafaday, Vice Speaker, Senator Sinagasin, Senator Taidegui. The BSP supports the intent of the bill to address Guam's critical housing shortage, particularly for low-to-moderate-income household. As Guam's land use planning agency and a member of the Application Review Committee, BSP is committed to providing technical analysis and recommendation to the Guam Land Use Commission to ensure the development proposal aligns with Guam land use policies and for the protection of our environment and natural resources. Under the purview of the Guam Coastal Management Program, BSP has developed standard operating procedures designed to thoroughly screen and assess the potential impacts of applications submitted to the ARC. This comprehensive SOP leverages a robust data set that includes landscape and coastal change data to understand the dynamic shifts in the environment, geological constraints data to identify limitation posed by geological formations, flood and coastal hazard data to assess risks associated with natural disasters. This multifaceted approach enables BSP to conduct a precise effect test based on Guam's enforceable policies as authorized by Executive Order 78-37, which is the Guam land use policies. Furthermore, BSP ensures conformity with the North and Central Land Use Plan, which was approved by Public Law 30-244 and serves as a critical element of the Guam Comprehensive Development Plan. For land uses situated outside the designated boundaries of the North and Central Land Use Plan, BSP assessment aligns with the land use districting map as authorized under Executive Order 78-23. While the Bureau supports the intent to build Number One Sixty-four dash Thirty-eight, we share the following concerns and recommendations. Number one, on page three, line thirteen, the phrase "planning guidance provided by BSP" should be removed. As a participating ARC member, BSP offers planning guidance via its formal position statements during the ARC reviews. Number two, the draft language proposes a new section, subsection six-one-two-eight-oh-three, streamline zoning process. On page five, line nine, includes a requirement for BSP to issue planning guidelines on long-range zoning policies. As mentioned in Bullet One, as a participating ARC member, BSP offers planning guidance via its formal position statements during the ARC reviews. Regarding long-range zoning policies, ARC bases its review on the provisions set forth in the North and Central Land Use Plan. As such, BSP's position statements help inform the ARC recommendation to the Guam Land Use Commissions for action. Additionally, BSP's current staffing level and existing workload limits its ability to consistently meet the thirty-day deadline outlined in the bill. The short turnaround time may compromise the quality of technical analysis and the thorough review of applications, particularly in more complex cases. We respectfully recommend amending the bill to allow for conditional extensions when justified. We also recommend allocating funding to support the hiring of additional personnel to help implement this initiative effectively. Number three, as Guam designated Land Use Planning Agency, the BSP originally housed the Land Use Planning Division, which was responsible for coordinating land and water resource analysis using the geographic information system across the government of Guam. Staff within the Land Use Planning Division used GIS-linked data maps to review public and private development proposals for environmental and community impacts, ensuring that existing infrastructure could adequately support such development. The division aimed to provide accurate geospatial information to planners and decision-makers fostering inter-agency data sharing and informed land use planning. Due to local funding constraints, the division's functions were integrated into the federally-funded Guam Coastal Management Program around 2010. While BSP does not currently employ a full-time GIS manager, GMP staff and BSP's leadership, more specifically the BSP Deputy Director, continues to perform development review functions utilizing GIS tools. Providing additional resources to BSP will strengthen our capacity to meet expedited timelines without compromising the integrity of technical review and analysis. Number four, on page four, line twenty-two to twenty-three, the bill cites, along with BSP's comments, "is not necessary as BSP is a member of the ARC and continues to provide position statements for any rezoning applications submitted to the ARC." Number five, on page five, line nineteen, appears to have conflicting language. The bill states that the Guam Land Use Commission must comply with the Application Review Committee and GLUC's final approval. To BSP's knowledge, the ARC is not an approving body but serves as an advisory group that issues a determination position statement for the GLUC consideration. The term "must" in this context may require an approval process of the collective ARC members in which the Executive Order Seventy-eight twenty-three or Executive Order Ninety-six dash twenty-six does not empower the ARC to collectively declare an application approved or disapproved. Number six, on page seven, line fifteen to twenty, the bill states that developments located over the northern Guam lands aquifer or within designated water resource protection areas shall be required to connect to an existing municipal sewer system if accessible. Where a municipal sewer infrastructure is not available, the developer should install advanced nitrogen-reducing on-site wastewater disposal systems approved by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. BSP believes that this should only be extended to R ones, single-family dwellings, that meet the current minimum lot size requirements. Apartment buildings and housing subdivisions should not be allowed to use nitrogen-reducing on-site wastewater disposal systems within the groundwater protection zone. Subsection six-one-two-eight-oh-four, zoning conversions, compliance, and enforcement F should not conflict with the Guam Water Quality Standards at Twenty-two Gar, subsection five-oh-one C, one B, that requires a high-density residential development. More than one dwelling per one-half acre should not occur within adequate public sewer service. And number seven, on page eight, line eighteen, the bill introduces a provision to streamline public hearings in the mayor's planning council reviews for affordable housing projects as it relates to the Hybrid Commission's protocols. However, no amendments were proffered to Twenty-One GCA Chapter Sixty-one, subsection six-one-one-oh-six. Requirements before municipal public hearings, while the new proposed subsection six-one-two-eight-oh-seven streamlines the public hearing and mayor's planning council review process for affordable housing projects, it appears to establish a framework for an expedited MPC review. The bill will also benefit by amending Twenty-One GCA Chapter Sixty-one, subsection six-one-one-oh-six to align with the intentions of this bill. This will help ensure clarity and consistency in the public hearing process as envisioned in the act. While BSP supports the Guam Legislature's efforts to address Guam housing's crisis and improve the zoning process to this proposed legislation, it is important the efforts to streamline land use decision-making are effectively managed through thorough technical reviews to safeguard environmental sustainability and support responsible community development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Director Leon Guero, for your testimony tonight. Director Borja?
I don't know if I have enough energy to present that. I do want to say that, you know, always the question when we come down here, especially members of the administration, is, do you support the bill? I kind of like to wait until the sausage is done before I give the recommendation with it to support the bill. Having said that, my presence here is from the Department of Land Management, not through the Guam Land Use Commission, where if they were to make a comment on this bill, it would be done as a group and not as one member. Having said that, I do want to, you know, react actually to some of these points that were brought up. And I'll just list the ones then that are outside of my lane, which is the absolute definition of affordable. We at Land Management, we don't do that on a daily basis, you know, to define, you know, what's affordable. However, in the law, there is a, in the zoning laws, there is a part of the law that kind of like determines what or how land management or the GLUC, LUC processes an application, and that's the Hybrid Commission. So if there's a project over X amount, I believe it's two or three million dollars, they call the mayor's in. The Hybrid Commission is actually made up by the by the mayor of that particular municipality that has the project in there and members of the regular GLUC. So, you know, this issue about affordable, you know, we don't really have any comment on that. I know there's some definition on that, you know. And I guess the title of the bill is to streamline for affordable housing projects. I would maybe request that let's streamline it for any project. Why should we streamline it just for affordable housing? If you've identified a section of the bill, the law existing now, that there is a zoning delay for whatever reason, then let's address that delay for all kinds of applications and like that, you know. So zoning delays at the Guam Land Use Commission and the Department of Land Management, we actually have a flow chart. You come to us with your application. We review it within ten days, sometimes sooner. All the information is complete. Sorry, Siri. So you know, the zoning delays on that flow chart, application does this, goes forward, application does that, goes forward. So in that flow chart, you could probably see where a particular application, you know, may be delayed. I'll tell you, we can process land use applications ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty days. The perfect ones. The ones that have a problem, you know, those go, take a little bit longer. One year, you're being kind, Liz. But, and the reason for that really is when the preliminary application interview comes in, we always advise the applicant, go work with the agencies where you might have a potential problem. If your application is for something up in the hills and you think you might have a problem with morhain or endangered species, talk to agriculture before you submit your application so that when your application comes in, there won't be a delay from agriculture saying, hey, wait a minute, we got some snails there. Although the snails are found all over the island, they seem to be endangered, you know, so, so that thing. So you have to identify the zoning delays. And I wouldn't really call it zoning delays. I would call it conforming to the law as to what is required for a zoning thing. And some agencies, I believe, should get special dispensation of the time that they're to review an application. For example, EPA, they actually review that application for four issues, soil, water, and a couple of other things. You know, land management, we don't review it for soil or water. That's their baby. That's the Application Review Committee, so we have that on it. So, so the zoning delay might not be a delay. The only time that we think it may be a delay when the agency requests for a forty-five-day extension, as they are allowed in the law. Some of these applications are quite complicated, you know, like you heard the previous bill, you know. Half of the things they were saying about environmental, I don't understand, you know, like that. So, so let's just try and define the absolute definition of what affordable. That's very hard, you know. I could afford my house because when my dad was getting old, he said, "Son, you want to buy the house?" I said, "I thought I was going to get it for free," and he goes, "No, you know, I got to sell it to you," you know, so, "Sure, you know, five thousand dollars, I'll take it," you know. So that was affordable for me, but for some other people who may not be as fortunate, it's not affordable on it, you know. The delay really in not really, it's really not in the zoning thing. It's really when it comes to that point where the developer of that subdivision has to prove to land management, the GLUC, that you installed the infrastructure already before they sign off on it on the planning division. And next is the, and again, this is, next one is out of my lane. Ten-year post-certified affordability. I guess you should get that from Guam Housing, but why not make it run the term of the mortgage of your, why just ten years, you know, so? And that's, like I said, that's out of my lane in there. But I was talking to Guam Housing on there and I said, "Why don't they just make it the term of the mortgage," you know, rather than ten years? Looking at the bill, it's a long bill, it's ten. Just as a disclosure, I was previously asked to review the bill and I said, "No, because if I review the bill and give you comments, then it's my bill." I don't want to say, "Oh, Joe said it's okay," you know, like that. But, so that ten-year certificate. But looking at the bill, really, I think what we're looking at to streamline is really the public hearing requirement. In all the applications that have gone through to the Guam Land Use Commission, that's kind of like always the stickler. Because if you do make a decision on something that was not duly noticed for a public hearing, your decision is no good. We've had that two issues. The emerald green condos where one right across the street neighbor did not get that certified mail that there was going to be a rezoning and the darn thing is like ten feet away from your, you know, house and like that. You know, so that land management had to do that over because we didn't fulfill that. But it's that public hearing requirement and the law requires that the municipality, mayor's office, Mr. Plan Council hold two public hearings in addition to the land management public hearing. So an application could be required to actually have five public hearings. And the problem with the public hearings, it's not like, hey, Liz, we're going to have a public hearing tomorrow and your application. Nope, we got to schedule it twenty-five days later, mail out that thing before it comes in. So there's a lot of administrative nightmares in that, you know. And if you don't mail out those letters twenty-five days before the hearing, then, and some of these landowners are off island. We get letters coming in after the twenty-five-day period, you know, because they were off island and they probably didn't respond to it. So it's really, I think, the issue on the bill is that public hearing. It says that it's three municipal planning council hearings. Really, it's only required two and only one. Why is the municipal planning council hearing two? One to learn about it and one to vote on it. So you have a public hearing. Okay, this is what we're going to do. Okay, now I got the information. Now I can go back. I don't want to make my decision tonight, you know. But the municipal public hearings might say, "Okay, we'll have another hearing at our next scheduled session." And then do that. Now, unlike the GLUC, we're mandated to have our meetings every second and fourth Thursday. It's without, municipal planning council, some of them don't even have members, Senator. We had a real big project delayed down here in Agania because there was no municipal planning council. We've had two projects that were delayed and I say "we" because once that application is in there, the application belongs to GLUC in several municipalities where the mayor just flatly refused to have a public hearing because, you know, for whatever reason. And, you know, so we don't move along, we don't want to move along without the input from the municipality, you know. That's kind of a no-no on it. But by the same token, I don't see any mayors here tonight. My suggestion to my staff out there when we were there, I said, "I'd go and then tell the, ask the chairperson to cancel the hearing until the mayors come down here." Because even the mayors on this summary zone change thing, which is, doesn't require a public hearing or a commission, a commission hearing and like that. You know, I've got a couple of mayors that, "Joe, we don't want to do that anymore. You do it." You know, you decide what the zone is should be in our village through that summary zone process. And offline, I can tell you who those two said mayors are, that they don't really want that authority. But that public hearing thing is a really Tiffany-new thing. It was put in there by a bill sponsored by Senator Tomada, I believe, in the thirty-third or thirty-fourth Guam Legislature because a couple of mayors, several mayors were complaining that they weren't getting the information to make a decision, a resolution before the thing. But now we have it and kind of like, you know, we're not here, you know. So, so I think that's the thing, you know. So change the part of the law about the public hearing. Never mind all the other portions of that, seven pages, six, seven, eight, and nine. If you identify that it's, this is your zoning delay. What's the zoning delay? Look and see where the delay is. You know, is the planner on leave or something? You know, and to me, I wouldn't call it a delay. It's a legal requirement to do that. Same token by the things that, you know, that we have thirty days to receive the position statements and the application review committee. And if we don't, the law says you don't have a public hearing until any and all position statements are in. Any and all. So if I don't get a position statement from EPA, I can't have that hearing. And we've had that, but, you know, and again, I use EPA as an example because theirs is not a one-day thing. You submit the application to them, say, "Oh, yeah, it's okay." No, we've got to route it to three or four different divisions, you know. Whereas if it land management and the other, like DPW, it's mostly access, you know, house the road to the place. BSP issues the water quality, seashore things and other issues and like that. So if we identify where the delay is, quote-unquote delay, you know, what's holding it up, you know? We've had people coming, you know, very prominent people call up and say, "Can't you just have the public hearing on that?" the public hearing on that? Or can't you just have the meeting on it? Sure, we'll have the meeting and then it could get challenged and then we're back to square one, you know? So, so I think if you're going to look at the, at the, at the delay thing, I don't think this bill really is necessary. Almost, I would say maybe 90% to 90% of these things in the bill that requires a thing, like with the ARC, we're already doing that. We're already doing that, you know? It would, I don't think the bill would, in its present form in the beginning of the sausage making, would really, really have an effect on the timing on it. What would have an effect is, take a look at the flow chart, you know? Is it, Joe Borja's always on leave and he can't sign the thing or, take a look at it, you know? So there's no really average time on it, but I'll tell you, if you get a perfect application, 90 to 120 days on that rezoning thing, but, you know, those are hard to come by and like that. So I would just say that, looking at the thing there, the, what's an affordable housing? I don't know. That's not my lane, you know? What, how long should it be as the, as affordable thing? I don't know, you know? But if you're trying to look and see where the delay might be, quote unquote delay, it might be the public hearing requirement to do that. But you also have to balance that out as one of the things, as, you know, she didn't know about this hearing, she didn't know about that one, you know? So we do have to have some sort of public hearing, you know, so you have to balance that out. You want to make sure when your neighbor starts bulldozing his place, you want to, what the hell is going on next door, you know? Is it going to make my lot flooded, you know? So yes, definitely there should be requirement. But also by the same token, you know, you set these things up, the agencies don't turn in their things on time and we really, and I'll tell Senator Titegui, we don't have that problem now of agencies, of us having to call up an agency, hey, where's your position statement? They come in on time. And when they request an extension, it's a valid reason and it's an automatic, yes, you know, get the extension. We just need to know in the process where your review is, why isn't it here or why you don't think it'll be here in 30 days? So we don't have a problem with that. That's, that's not what's causing the delay. I think what's causing the delay, quote unquote delay, is that public hearing requirement. And again, it's, setting a public hearing is very, very hard. If you want a public hearing on the 25th, you don't send your notice to the paper on the 22nd, you send it 25 days prior to that day, you know? And before you do that, somebody's got to go check who are your neighbors? You know, they check to see, who do you give the notice out to besides the big notice and like that? So maybe looking at the bill, maybe it seems that the issue in the bill is the three MPC hearings, but it's, it's actually only two hearings, one for the, the land management. And if the MPC and the mayors were good, when we set up the land management hearing, why don't you just come to that hearing and get all that information on it, rather than having to set up another public hearing, get the consultants in again to do the same thing over, probably a night and like that, and probably two or three members of the MPC. Some MPCs are very, very, very good, you know, at keeping their mandates, you know, on it, but some of them, you know, are like that. And, you know, most of these applications, they're not down in Maleso or in Alahan, some of them are, the great majority of applications are the mooning, that's the way it is. So to me, I think, and again, I can't say I support the bill or not support it because I don't see what the end is, but let's identify the problem. Where is that quote unquote delay? My opinion in running the GLUC as executive secretary, it's that public, public hearing requirement, that's where the delay is. I don't think there's any delay coming back from the agencies on it. You know, I've, I've never had that problem with the agencies where, man, you got to get that thing in because, you know, something like that, you know? And if they see that it's a complicated review, they'll ask for the extension, which is allowed, you know? The only other one that I can think of that may speed up things is probably in the rules and regulations for the GLUC. You have an application, it's processed, it's presented for a vote on say, the meeting of the commission, say on May 4th. That application really is not approved technically, legally, until you have the following meeting where the minutes are approved or not. If the minutes are approved, then all the action that was taken before that, you know, I, I don't agree with that as an administrator. You have, you have public hearings, you have it online and like that. I think if that application is approved there, September 6th, then it's September 6th, not have to wait until the next one month meeting to actually confirm that it is approved like that. And then you also have to send it down to the legislature to see if they have to say anything about it. Hey, you already delegated the zoning authority to the land use commission, why does it have to come back here again to, to do it, you know? And then of course it goes down to the governor again for her approval, you know, but chief executive officers administrator, I think they should require her signature, but to get it back down here to the legislature where they can have a second, third bite on that thing. I used to work with the legislature, but, you know, I, I don't think they should, so. So that one month time of the minutes being approved and then technically that's the approval of the project, I think we can cut a month of, out of the project, you know, out of the process on that. So I, I think that's it and I am disappointed that the mayors are not here, but, you know, they've been real busy and especially for Baragada since we won that thing, I think they're still celebrating for the float, you know? But thank you for the opportunity and I do want to say that, you know, there were some people, there's always taking so long and like that, it says, how about you, Mr. Borja going to go? I said, I'm 75, I was the Quran, I'm used to this. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Borja, Director Borja, for your testimony tonight. I'm going to go ahead and open up the panel to my colleagues if they have any questions. Senator Titegui?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for sticking around and, and being here. I, I stuck around because I wasn't quite sure about this bill. I'm glad Lola, you were able to point out a lot of concerns too, as I was looking at the bill. But in a nutshell, I mean, this is, this bill was, was created for affordable housing. I mean, for us to, Joe, turn it around and make it like, you know, no host bar and how I have it for anyone, doesn't make any sense. It's, we don't see, you know, businesses or anybody, you know, having issues finding places to rent. What we're having a problem with on this island is people being able to rent affordable houses. We opened this up to anybody and everybody, like you said, we're just creating places for military to rent out. And that was our biggest problem on this island is that a lot of these apartments and homes are being rented out to military. It's undercutting our local people who can't afford it. So we have to stick with affordability and whether to define it or not, or find that threshold, I'm sure there is something because Carlos is a whiz at that, you know, finding out what, what the federal government uses as a guideline on what is considered affordable or moderate income or high income. So I don't think we're going to have an issue with that. I truly appreciate Lola, all the amendments that you made, it, it makes sense. I was wondering, did you have an opportunity to collaborate with EPA when you did your testimony?
Actually, Deputy Director Matt was one who had spoke with Michelle on, on that particular one regarding the...
Okay, and, and thank you so much on that. I was hoping that's what was happening because I saw some things that were very familiar in here. You know, you talked about the, the streamlining issues and of course I introduced Joe, we brought it up, that ARC is not an issue anymore because they're on time. Maybe it was because of the threat of a bill, you know, tagging $250 fine for these directors who, who are not doing their job, you know, and getting these out, these applications reviewed in time. So I'm glad to see that's working out, you know, that they're, they're being more on time, but go ahead Lola, I mean, you're going to say some...
I'm just going to make a comment.
Sure.
So I know in my office, we, we have one staff, the GCMP, that does, as part of the ARC and then we do have a backup. So we, we have asked for an extension. It could be because the individual was out sick and, you know, there's, is, so it's not, I mean, I know you mentioned something about a fine, but I know in the government of Guam, at least in my office, we do whatever information comes through and they request, and there is a turnaround time, we always try to accommodate that. But should there be situation where a staff is sick or, you know, there's other pressing activities, we will ask for, for an extension on...
And I'd like pointing out that in order for you to process this whole legislation, we recommend allocating funding to support the hiring of additional personnel to help implement this initiative effectively. Absolutely, it's a lot of work that needs to be done on this and, and you're going to need that staff. I mean, the whole purpose is to expedite this, but you need manpower in order to do that, you know? I mean, without compromising the environment, you need that manpower. Mr. Borja, it says in the bill, 45 days in order to, it says, the Department of Land Management shall adopt procedural guidelines within 45 calendar days of enactment of this, enactment of this act to ensure compliance and expedite, and then it says, and shall ensure that all zoning determinations are issued within 90 calendar days of receipt of a complete application. First, is the 45 day calendar days enough time in order to adopt procedural guidelines?
I don't know, I'll have to look at the administrative adjudication law and the implementation of rules and regs. I don't think so, but I'll...
I don't think so either, 45 days is not enough time if we have to go through that. And then of course it shows the, that, and shall ensure that all zoning determinations are issued. Okay, well that, that one, you know, you could have to make it happen, so the 90 days. But other than that, we're all trying to do our part to try and save these families from, from having to leave our island because they can't afford it. That's what we're here about. And this legislation, it, it needs a lot of work on it because the way it is right now, I don't think I support it. And other than that, again, thank you for your time and I'm sorry you missed dinner. I know I can afford to miss some food right now, but, you know, I appreciate you being here and sticking it out. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Titegui. Senators Sinagastin, you recognize, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a co-sponsor, you know, I've, I've heard the, the recommendation for the amendments and the proposal by Joe, Mr. Borja about the timeline. And, and we're going to address that and maybe we've, we just reword it where when the, when the mayors are going to meet or when land managers are going to meet, they start meeting together, not be separate so they can just gather the information together. And then back to Ms. Liangaro, reference to the Senator Titegui brought up that you're going to need more people, recommend you send in that information, what do you need? Say you need more people, one, two, what? And what's the cost? Because this may not be a budget thing, but we need, we need to put it in so that we know where, how it can be funded. Otherwise, you can only pray that you get the budget, but if it's in the bill, then it connects. It's, it's not supposed to... Yes, Mr. B?
Senator, might I ask for the same consideration? I did submit a financial impact statement to BBMR and of course, a lot of it is staffing and like that, but relative to the bill, I hope the committee received it. I did submit a financial impact statement from, to BBMR as requested by them.
Okay, we'll look at that, but I'm, as a co-sponsor, I'm going to work with the, the chairman and the, and the author, that we make this work. We figure it out and then we just move on to it. Don't delay and make up excuses why we can't move on the bill. Because that's what holds back a lot of things. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we'll just move on. And folks, thank you for sticking around and you have a safe evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Senators Sinagastin. There'll be no other questions, no comments. Bill number 164, that's 38COR, has been publicly heard. The committee will continue to accept written statements on today's hearing within seven days from today, which can be mailed to my office on the second floor of the Guam Congress Building at 163 Chalan Santo Papa in Agania. You may also send your statements to us at Vice Speaker Tony Ada at GuamLegislature.gov. Thank you here, thank you for your participation here tonight. The public hearing is adjourned and the time is now 7:23 PM. Thank you everyone for being here again. Thank you.